Order Monday agenda tonight is appointments for intern town administrator, board of registrar. And they'll shift to new business or discussion on possible. A discussion and possible decision regarding proposed draft town administrator by law for our annual meeting warrant. Approval of the town administrators contract and executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A clause twenty one. Or chapter thirty A twenty one clause two negotiations with non union personnel. Discuss the interim town administrators contract. But it'll business and look to approve the minutes. That's all we have unless anybody else has anything else they want to share before we get started.
I'm taking it out of thought, but if not, you have on the ARP fund that twenty thousand for waterline. Yes, he um this ARP fund rescue act from water cost only. You guys got this a little while back. I would like it to be released so we can get that water line laid out engineered.
Okay.
Up Hill Press down west side down Main Street down Little Street and around the veterinarian hospital and back. Not all of that, but that but. There's twenty brands hit me up for to do with it to do the engineering. Brian knows about it and so I know about it, but they're gonna stop the road pretty soon if we don't get up back in and. Get things rolling and get the engineering done. We're not going anywhere.
I don't think there's anything stopping you from doing that. We approved that money at a prior meeting. What? What would be gating what's keeping you from?
Well, no, well, I guess nobody knows. You might have approved it, but I didn't know it and he I was gonna because they have already they've done some work for PSC group. I would call them and tell them if they because, you know, I would imagine they'd want to send their.
Mike, I don't I don't think there's anything in your way of proceeding with that. We.
Yeah, it's just engineering. We approved the funding for parts of that and then.
You're free to go with that. I don't. There's nothing stopping. You don't need another revo of that money. The money was allocated and. We made that decision how much we were gonna spend on that loop around Hill Press. What the school board was gonna get for their share of it and all that stuff was all in that meeting, right? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I think this one, I think this year was before that. This uh.
I can check with Brian and I can find out, but if you just send myself.
I thought it had to do with you to do it, but I don't know who. I'm not gonna call the engineering company and say, yeah, go ahead and do it and then find out, you know, that money is not going to. It's not going to be given to him because then I'm off on my I'm on the side after that stick and I don't like that.
Okay, so first of all, do you have proposal from the engineering company on their scope and cost?
Just a at the time when I discussed this with them was just a rough and it was gonna cost almost a twenty grand over twenty grand. I said, well, let me find out where this money is before I go tell you folks to get going and you spend your time sending people up here. Et cetera, et cetera. And then I find out that I'm. You know, I put my top before my house and so.
So I don't I don't know what.
I don't think this is the right forum.
I don't know what you're.
I call them and tell them to go ahead and do it. Brian's on the line. It's just the money's already allocated.
So can we get?
Get the work done and get an invoice.
So I can call them and tell them to do the work and it's it's okay.
I believe our chief has said that it is.
That's the water line around the blue from Rockers Street. By me, Woodwood Streets. Up Hill Press down west bit down mainy up old behind the veterinarian and back into the mainy. Yeah, there's the county.
The engineering stuff.
The engineering. Right, right. And that's all we're talking about.
Jake, are you aware of any of this? Are you aware of any of this? I don't know what's going on here, but he's having his own meeting. And so what I would ask is that you talk with. Either the interim town administrator who's we assume is gonna get appointed tonight or address this question directly to Brian, who after tonight will no longer be a town administrator. And get an answer because I don't know what's going on here with that. We're not part of that discussion and and so get the and and he doesn't know anything about it either. So. In fairness to us that are sitting here now, have Jake or speak to Brian by email or us tomorrow and get clarity on this, okay, rather than this. Whatever's going on, okay? I want specific direction.
It's speaking in my ear. No, I mean, just because I wanted I didn't want to go any further with the engineering until I knew that you guys at least were. You know, aware and on board to someone to to remind them that they should stop.
Yeah, you should be okay with that, but I want you to just speak with Jake tomorrow and get. I'm speaking up, okay? We're not gonna do that. All set. No, we'll deal with it this way. We'll get. He's all set.
I think we're okay, Brian. Thank you. I'll give the chief to the ears. We'll do what Ron has suggested and just get it properly better out.
All right, is um so Mike, I don't want to leave you with hanging here, but just follow that process tomorrow and get that. I think you're all set with that, but just be sure of that and speak with Jake tomorrow. But is David coming here tonight?
David Demarche? I don't think so. So they'll shift to appointments.
All right.
Thanks, Mike. We have an appointment for interim town administrator David Demarche. Do we have any motions for said term and appointment? I'm not sure what the proper wording is.
Are we gonna play? Who's going first?
He's on the agenda to vote first.
Yeah, but we have, all right. He's first. Oh, we I don't have any issues. I think we're all set with this, right? And the only thing we gotta do after this is approve his contract or approve the contract before we appoint the administrator.
It's approving the contract. He more or less has a good model that town council provided and the terms that you've already agreed with him, I think, on this to pay himself. It's pretty much just all very clear. And I think the copy should be up there for me this time.
Yeah, this this one here?
I think so. It says it's the contract should be.
Has he seen this?
I assume so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint David Demarche as the interim town administrator. For a period to expire December of this year. In accordance with. This contract.
Guess I'll open it up for discussion, even though it's just you and I.
He's second.
Second motion on the floor. My only thought is that it should have been signed by him first if he had it.
I would have thought so. That's what I'm just saying. I don't I don't understand it.
And then do we allow Doc to sign or do we have to see how to physically come in and sign it?
Physically sign it. They're gonna want some sort of license to check each other.
Okay. Guess I would have liked to have seen him sign it just to make sure. But that's just my own.
Well, let's let's put him on and Jake, he has seen this though, right?
As far as I'm aware.
Is this gonna be? Is this gonna be a wet signature or is he gonna Doc to sign it?
As I understand it, it's gonna be a wet signature.
But it's been emailed to him, right?
I presume so.
And I think we should just go forward.
Yeah, that's good. Do you want to sign this version I got right here?
You can sign it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have Mark Terry sign off on that too. The other appointment on the floor is for an appointment to the board of registrars, registrar to the board of registrars. Barbara E. Martin of sixteen Lake Street for a term commence April first, twenty twenty two and expire March thirty one, twenty twenty five.
I wrote mine. Mike, do you know her? Do you know who she is? All right. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Barbara to the committee of. Board of Registars for a term to expire in twenty twenty five.
That's a move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is new business. That's just very discussion and possible decision regarding proposed draft town administrator by law for our annual town meeting warrants. You've had an updated copy shared with us that I believe has gone through Myrick review this past week. There was some yellow highlights on it after Ron, you had sort of.
It might be mine, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure.
This is not mine for I know this is not Myrick's.
And that was part of my email. I didn't quite understand. Okay, so as you are Kevin's, okay.
This isn't. We don't have an approval from them from Myrick's.
Okay.
So explain, Mr. Chairman, what how that came about?
Please do.
Please what?
Please do.
Please do.
Yes, explain.
So well, let me introduce myself. I know I met you all telephonically, but in person, hi.
Peter's brother.
What's that?
He is brother.
He is brother, see? No, he is first cousin.
Cousin. Oh, you guys are cousins.
Yeah. Yep. So I've been working with the committee for what about eighteen months now, Mike, great guy to work with and John has been very instrumental in giving us ideas and.
I started with you, but I stepped off.
Oh, that's right. You are the first two, right? So I will tell the board you you guys did a good job appointing your committee. I've been a town administrator tired now for forty two years. We've got a lot of committees and this is an excellent group of people you put together. They have worked incredibly hard. I think we're up to nineteen drafts of the of the charter. So at the last meeting, which was after the board meeting. When you saw that charter version, they decided to pull out the town administrator part and just repropose that as a bylaw and forego the charter. For now, at least pending whatever decision they want to make. So I guess last Thursday you guys had a meeting. You considered that first draft. One of you were kind enough to put some comments into an email areas you were concerned about. Lee afforded that to me and asked if I could make some changes which would address some of those concerns. So what I've done is I've redrafted provisions that address some of those concerns. Other concerns, I'd just like to give you my thought on because it's not things that necessarily would be in the bylaw, I think, like just give you an idea of how you can address. And make this a document which I think. You know, frankly, good legislation and bylaws or legislation are not a hundred percent what anybody wants. They're compromises by a lot of people in order to get it to a point where people can find enough that it to support, maybe not everything. But enough to be able to make your way forward and to make some progress. The whole point of this, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, with a new TA coming on at some point. You want to get the best candidates you can get. And absolute number one thing that any candidate is gonna look at is what's what's the job? Job is described in either a charter or a bylaw typically. That's what most towns do. Now, not every town does that. There are a few towns that try to do it with a job description that the board of selectmen approves. Or in the contract that you sign, the permanent here. The problem with the approach of just doing it in a job description is a board of selectmen can like that and another board can change it. Like that. So it's not really, it has no substance.
Right.
And town administrators tend to be fairly savvy people. This is their profession and they get it. So they say, I'm taking a job and I don't know if it's gonna be the same job next week. So that's gonna eliminate a whole bunch of your candidates right off the bat. At least let me put you this way, gentlemen. It will eliminate the kinds of candidates that you want. Now, there are people who will still apply for the job and they tend to be folks who are either frankly unqualified. Or just so young, they don't understand the implications of agreeing to a job that doesn't have a description. So you really want a bylaw which weighs out the terms. That's the safest way to do it because the TAs know that went through your hands. It went through our boards, committees and commissions, elected committee, formulated it. And finally, it went to a town meeting and the people said, yes. So they've got pretty good assurance. This is what the community wants. And that's critical to getting good good candidates.
Yeah.
So. Let me just go through if it makes sense the the questions that Ron had raised and my response.
That would be great. Yeah, you're gonna say the question and then.
Yeah, I'll read it and.
Yes.
Because again, some of these didn't make their way into edits in the contract. It's just things I'm gonna reflect for you.
Sure.
So the first one was the reimbursement for a bond is typically a different requirement. We currently have not had bonded any TAs. Now, I will tell you, it's completely up to you if you want to have your TA be bonded. Law requires if you handle cash, you have to be bonded. So your treasury collector's gotta be bonded. That's the one. TAs tend to be bonded, not because they handle cash, but because they have fiduciary responsibilities that accurately report the budget and the revenue forecast and all that. Let's face it, if the TA gives you a revenue forecast, it's completely screwed up. And then you go and you pass a budget. You got a big problem. So TAs tend to be bonded for what's called faithful performance and things like that. Different kind of bond for treasure. TAs get a different. I would tell you, don't be in any way dismayed or a difficulty. It is a normal thing for TA to be bonded.
Okay.
It is not expensive. Six, seven hundred dollars tops. Your current insurance company, I asked Brian, Jake, I don't think my do Maya do you property casualty?
Yes.
They do our property casualties.
They'll do your TA bond for peanuts.
Is that a renewing like the TA has to have seven hundred dollars every year to renew that bond?
Yeah, it's an annual status.
Okay.
So normally what happens is the TA fills out a lengthy questionnaire. There's a there's a background check that is very minimal, but basically to make sure he's not as a pop as a criminal or more importantly fiduciary.
Yeah, sure.
Then they issue the bond. He pays for the bond and then you reimburse it. You can do it or you pay the you pay Maya directly, whatever way you want to work, you know, that's fine. This is written so you reimburse it. There's nothing magical about that. So the first thing I just want to say is don't be dismayed about the bond. It's really not a big deal. It's normal. But if you don't want to do it, that's fine. Your TA is not gonna object because the bond is done for the town's protection.
Right.
Not the TAs. So if you say TA, we don't want a bond, he's gonna say, okay, he's gonna be perfectly happy.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Some of this is my own, all right? The TA screwed something up.
Yep.
And we had that happen to us one cycle ago, right? And we were able to straighten it out.
What are we gonna do?
Through Maya?
No, you have a professional E and O policy as part of your standard property casualty package through Maya, which covers all employees. Including the town administrator for Arizona Mission. It's an E and O. Now, that E and O policy is much broader in coverage than a simple bond would be. Bond is very limited. Professional liability E and O coverage that is part of your standard mile PC package. Has very broad coverage in it, covers you too. Call the public officials liability or public officials, you know.
Like brokers, real estate brokers are required to have it because.
Yeah, brokers have a different E and O so they don't get a ninety three A violation and things like that. So I sat, by the way, I sat on the Maya board of directors for a decade. I was the chairman of the board for three years, so I know exactly what how their insurance works and what the issue. So if you don't want to have a bond, you just want to have a TA covered on the E and O policy, it's fine. It's fine. Either way.
Um, so let me ask this question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't want to delay this discussion, but I'm gonna have a number of questions and rather than drag this out and try to compress my time. How many TAs? If I were to call the TAs in Tingsborough and Broughton, are they bonded?
I would bet you you'd get about a fifty fifty response.
Yeah.
Small towns, if there's a tendency anywhere, small towns would be known. Large towns, absolutely. There are no TAs in a town over fifteen thousand that aren't bonded. But in smaller communities, in my career, I knew seven communities, I was bonded in probably four of those and not bonded in two or three. So. It's really your call.
Yeah, but we are covered without the bond.
Yes.
For the under the E and O clause in the casualty policy.
Yep, yep.
And Bonnie, correct, like there could have.
She will.
She carries it.
I get that. I get that. I'm not sure Bonnie is bonded or not. Maybe is she bonded to Maya?
Who?
The treasurer?
Oh, she has to be.
She is, right? And I bonded as well.
All right.
Yeah, you handle cash, Jake?
Yes.
Okay, so anybody who only cash. And that's a faithful fidelity bond so that if they embezzle, you get at least some of that embezzled money back. Okay, next question was delete last sentence insert a clause. TA will work with the board of selectmen, open meeting view discussing appoint candidates being considered for appointments with the town. So I added language that went beyond that. And that's the first yellow highlighting in this draft.
Under B.
Right, under B, which is the section you cited wrong. So this requires the TA. In the instance that any employee receives work-related directions from an elected board or commission. So any board or committee that's elected has employees working for it, board of selectmen, highway commission, board of health.
What's work related?
What's that? Work related, in other words, Mike is a rubber commissioner would give direction to your highway superintendent.
Okay.
And because there is a relationship, it's referred to in a law of servant master. So because the employee is given direction from this person and not exclusively the TA, they would get direction from the TA, they would also get direction from the elected board. So any elected board which has employees working would the TA would be required to. Confer with said board of commission to design the hiring process, number one. So the TA would say, okay, we get a vacancy, highway superintendent. Here's what I think we should have for hiring process. What do you guys think? Can you have a back? You know, you have a back and forth. Case of board of selectmen, maybe he's a treasurer collector vacancy. TA would come in and say treasurer collective vacancy. Here's what I'm thinking about for hiring process. He probably laid out with a piece of paper and said, what do you guys think? So that would be the first requirement. The next requirement. It will ensure that the board of commission has a role in the interview process. Now, the intention here is to make sure that the board of commission, the elected board of commission. Has a seat at the table during the interviews. Now, that can be as much or as little as the board wants. I've seen boards that once they get a confidence level in a TA, they just say, you do it. We're fine. Bring us the bring us the top two candidates and. You know, we'll we'll have an interview with just them or you just pick your guy and give us the name. And then other boards that say, we want to sit right there. We want to see all the resumes. Now. You have to remember Massachusetts, the attorney general has ruled under the open meeting law, the public records law, rather. And the open meeting law, that the rest of any document you see, you, the elected official, see is a public record. Unless it's covered by one of the seven executive session exemptions. And then any documents related to executive session are executive until such time as the minister released, then the document completes. So. The question you ask yourselves when you're looking at participating in interviews is if you see the resumes of the applicants. Semi finalists, then they're public. And maybe those semi, maybe those initial people that you're gonna interview don't want to be known.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're the treasurer collector the next town over. Nobody didn't know they were applying. So one of the decisions you'll have to make is do you want to turn over hire interviewing semi finalists to a committee or something? And then only you guys participate in the finals because the attorney general has ruled finalists, as you define them. Are public record automatic. They don't get a choice. So if they just, you get treasurer collective vacancy, you get fifteen resumes. Seven people get interviewed as semi finalists and three get designated as finalists. You can interview those three finalists and resume is already a public record anyways. With seven people, you're gonna make a choice because the minute you decide you want to interview them, their resume is gonna get released.
Right.
So there's a question there, but this all this says, it doesn't say how you're gonna do it.
Right.
All it says is you're gonna decide how you're gonna do it.
The individual boards in commission.
Right.
Likely in conjunction with TA.
And then the last part is that the board of commission would have the opportunity to provide a recommendation for the candidate to be appointed. Now, this does not say that the board of committee will make the appointment because if you do that, you're negating the whole point of the TA.
Right.
I mean, having your TA be the appointing authority is the whole point of having a TA. But what this does do is this says that the board of committee, if they want, can say that person would be our choice.
John Doe's.
Now, that's pretty heavy pressure on your TA.
Yeah.
Because unless your TA doesn't want to be TA anymore. On that thought, free, darn good reason to go against the wishes of an elected board of committee.
Yeah.
For the employee that's gonna work for that board of committee. Now, I'm not gonna tell you that that can't happen. But I'm just saying in the profession, we refer to it as a severely career limiting move. So if the board of selectmen says this is the person we want as treasurer and the TA says, yeah, no, I don't think so. We might want to reconsider that decision.
Yeah.
So as a practical matter, the way this is structured, it gives great buy-in and authority to the elected board of commissions to participate. At whatever level they want, including and right up to the point where they say, that's the person, you know, that we'd like to have. Now, who now the challenge for the TA and all TAs know this is to work with the elected board of committee in such a way that they create a consensual process. That everybody agrees is a good way to go about it. When you pick that final candidate, it's a consensus. It was this three selectmen. Three. So you got a TA and three elected folks and you might even bring a couple of other people in to the on the committee. And you work it, you know, you work until it's a consensus and everybody says, yeah, that's that's the best person.
Yeah.
That's the way this works.
Because you'd almost be appointing an ad hoc committee to address the vacancies.
I can tell you in forty two years, I never deviated from my appointment process, not once.
Yeah.
And it always had a committee which did the preliminary interviews, you know, screened the resumes. Pick the people to get preliminarily interviewed as the semi finalists, pick the who is gonna be a finalist. And then pass those three to a second committee. So even more people have the opportunity to participate. And then that second committee picked the finalist and then I appointed the choice of the committee.
Yeah.
And in forty two years, I never deviated from that once. And that's hundreds of department heads and employees. And I found frankly that it was a good process because at the end of the day, the candidate you pick really is professionally good and meets the goals of the of the community.
But here's where I'm gonna deviate from that, okay? And and just understand a little bit about myself. I work in corporate America for almost thirty years.
True.
And in an executive management role, the last twenty two years, right? And sixty percent of what I do is scored through ESAP, right? And the other forty percent is client satisfaction, CSAP, right? And so over the years, you get schooled in how to treat people and teach people and lead people and deal with people. And sixty percent of our. Of our of my scoring is based on that, right? But I will tell you, we had in this town not long ago, a really bad experience. And I and her went through hell and we're not gonna go through it again. We are not, as long as I'm here, sitting here, this time, I am not gonna go through this again. We went through hell with this.
I know.
I will tell you, there were women who worked here, one who passed away and another one who still worked here that sat in their offices crying on different days. Because they were torn apart by the TA over nonsense. One was told that she was incompetent and she's glad she's got a job here. I heard that. It wasn't. It's not bullshit. I heard it. It's from their lips to my ears. And so what happens in the in that case, Peter, is.
Kevin.
Kevin, I'm sorry.
Peter's the smart guy.
I'm used to talking to Peter. I've talked.
He's the doctor.
I he's a foot doctor, right? So I just know who he is. I'm sorry, Kevin. And so I don't want to live through that again, or I don't want to have the legacy of this document leave somehow the board that doesn't have that. Leave somehow the board that doesn't have that trauma of having to go through this all over again. And there were probably no fewer than eight or ten meetings, an executive session. With legal counsel, trying to figure out how to sort this out and separate appropriately, and we went through hell with it, right? And so, I, I, as I read through this, and you s- you hit the button when you said it a minute ago, the right TA. And so this document works great for people who are the right TAs.
Yes.
But at the end of the day, it is possible for a three-member board to have a failed hire. It just is.
Yep.
We're learning this thing. We have, when I got on in, in the finance committee, there was no TA. The TA thing is only in the last six years or whatever, right? So it's a new experience to us, and I'm on high alert for safeguarding the town. From hiring someone who would, could potentially be a failed hire. And that particular candidate that came here on, for her interview process, was, was glittering. She had all the right answers, she had all the right information, she was lined up perfectly well, and she's. And she got a unanimous support by the board, and it took us probably six or eight months to start to get a sense that things were not so well, alright? And when I read through this document, and I think about, and I read through some of Mark Terry's emails to us. When we were going through this, cause I saved those, alright? He points back to some of these things, saying, this is a flaw, that's a flaw, this process needs to be further defined. And so we were in a really bad situation, and it deteriorated further, fortunately for us. Fortunately for us, it deteriorated further where we could separate without cause at that point, right? Uh, and so. I, I'm in a complete, I'm, you know, one, one of the most, I, 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 I know Mark a dad really well. And over the years, I've met a couple of other TAs, um, from Oxbridge and a few other towns, just, and, and. Most of these folks are sharpshooters, extremely competent people. You know, they've got that, that weighting of sixty, forty between ESAT and CSAT and, and getting their job done, and for the most part, it goes well. But we could end up getting a bad hire in here, right? And so. I'm looking at this, at that clause, this B clause, and I'm saying, I'm not comfortable. I'm not, even as I read through this, and I appreciate your understanding. I'm not comfortable enough with this that, that we have a safety valve that can relieve. Board of Selectmen of liability in the event that we do have a failed hire. Now, to follow my logic here further, uh, we are gonna be on our fourth TA, alright? And so I heard the other night for the first time, the statistics were that a TA's life cycle is about three and a half or four years.
Four point two years.
Yeah, a great life cycle, right? I threw that out the window a long time ago, but. That, and that tells me that we're gonna have some turnover in this position, and it also.
Especially in small towns.
Yeah, and it also tells me that, um, we could have the, the, over a ten-year period. That average says, we could end up with a, with a, with a fail, a failed hire or the wrong person, that's why, that managed to get through the game, alright? And, and how does this, does this document work as a mechanism to easily? Have that person separated from the town? And that's what, that's what's concerning.
If I could suggest this one, there's a clause in the back that does exactly that.
Okay.
If we could hold that, cause we'll.
Alright, I, I will, I will.
What I would tell you, as a general rule, is that whether you have a bylaw or you don't have a bylaw. Really isn't gonna prevent you from making a bad hire or, or making a good hire.
No, I agree, cause.
The hire gets made.
Yeah.
Then they get handed this and says, here's your job. So. The, the. The, the language that was in the charter which we took out was another clause. Had a statement in there that the sole authority to hire and fire the town administrator is that of you three gentlemen, the Board of Selectmen. And the reason you see that, and that's almost a universal clause in our charter, is to put the blame squarely on the shoulder of three elected officials. So if you hire a failed town administrator, the public is looking at you at the ballot box.
Yeah, man, can't pass a buck any farther than the three people.
Because the whole idea, it's the whole accountable, the person who did the hire. Now, the board is responsible for hiring administrator, and the requirement is you get it right, you don't hire. Then the town administrator becomes the hiring authority for everybody else in cooperation with the boards. So that, and there's a specific rhyme to this reason. So that, if the, if some department head that gets hired is a failed department head, who's responsible? Who do you want to, do you want it to be the TAs responsible? Or you want it to be you? Because you don't have to give the authority to hire employees to the TA, you can keep it for yourself. And Mike, Highway Commission can keep it, and the Library Board can keep it. Your problem is, what this is designed to fix, and the committee talked about this endlessly, until they finally unanimously passed this. Was that, when you've got, I think right now, you've got eighteen separate hiring authorities in the town administration. Eighteen separate boards that can potentially hire employees. Out of those eighteen boards, I absolutely guarantee you, you do not have probably one or two people, if you have that many. Who are professionally trained in how to hire, discipline, and fire an employee. And yet those eighteen boards have that authority right now. There's no authority in the town administration, except the elected and appointed boards and commissions to hire. The number one area of, of lawsuits against cities and towns is employment law. Probably sixty percent of all those lawsuits now is in the area of employment law. Cause here's the reality. You hire somebody wrong, and somebody is agreed, who is a candidate and didn't get hired, they can sue you.
It's a risk.
You're hiring tough, instead of being squeaky clean, and this TA is the man or woman who's gonna make sure it's squeaky clean, cause they get the training. Once you get the person hired, you better be darn sure that you're paying them according to some kind of a system that ensures pay equity. Massachusetts has a brand-new two thousand eighteen pay equity act. A lot of people don't know that. It says, you'd better be paying balanced on the basis of gender, race, religion, all of that. You make a decision about hiring or giving a raise, and it affects somebody who's in one of the MCAD, Mass Commission Against Discrimination. Protected classes, and that's a whole bunch of different folks. You screw that up, they got lawsuits against you. Your TA is the person who's gonna make sure you don't get sued. And then finally, and here's what happened, if you fire somebody, you're gonna get sued. No matter how good you do the fire. You will get sued, because nobody gets fired in America anymore that doesn't fa- file a lawsuit. And that's cause there's lots of wrongful termination lawyers out there who make their living by making that case. And here's what you're gonna do. Actually seeing that through a trial to prove you had just cause or, or cause to fire that person. You're never gonna do that, because your insurance company, Maya, who insures you for that wrongful termination, is going to force you to settle. And the lawyer knows it. And what's the very first thing that's gonna get paid out at lawyer's fee? So they are lining up waiting to take the case. Unless it's something overwhelming. Like, you know, a case of clear embezzlement that was proven in a criminal court. But how to be two years later after you wanna get rid of the TA anyways?
Yeah.
So you fire them, they say, I didn't do it. Two years later, they get convicted, but in the meantime, you're already settled.
Can't give a nose for the eternity to get.
Right. So, now, I'm not saying that TA is the only person you fire, there's other people you fire.
Right.
Your TA is given the authority to do that. Because boy, I'll tell you what, and I was a selectman too, by the way. I was a selectman for almost nine years in the threat. Um, before I started my town administrator career, but somebody told me, hey, you don't even get paid to do that? I said, no kidding. Um, not quite the same, but, um. But the reality is, when it comes to hiring, elected officials tend to want to be involved. I want to be involved. When it comes to firing, trust me. Typically, when I say to my elected officials, I say, hey, I gotta fire this guy, you want to be involved, they're running for cover as fast as they can go. Cause it is not a fun process. And so. This bylaw provides that your TA will be the one, after a very consulting process, to sign a piece of paper. And be the guy to tell the woman whose credibility is on the line for a misfire, not you. That's the whole point. And they have the professional training to do it all in a way that keeps you out of the door. And if the day comes, there has to be a termination of a town, a town administrator, they do it. Because, again, if it's bungled, there's somebody accountable. And if there's one thing that's always gotta be the case in a democracy, is someone in the government has to be responsible. You know, the local government, we're pretty clear about that. State government, eh, federal government, my God, try to make somebody responsible for anything in a federal government, it's impossible. Nobody knows who does anything. But in the local level, at least, we still preserve the idea that somebody's, somebody can be rewarded or punished for stealing personal. And in this case, it's your TA. That's who you put the authority. So, it's something you gotta think about, but I can tell you that your, your governance committee, which had a broad, you know, um, cross-section. The town people from boards and committees, this is their product unanimously. And let me tell you something. It was not easy to get this guy in the board.
So you only get it because you're just asking if you could take that out of the charter, and I said, yeah.
There you go. Hey, we, we listen.
Now you're friends.
So, you know, I, I think it says a lot that we actually finally got this thing after two years of work and nineteen revisions. We finally get, got it to a point where the committee said, this is, be unanimously endorsed this. Now, I also want to tell you, Ron, the committee has not voted these changes. These are strictly my suggestions at this point. Got a funny feeling that if the board accepts these and says, okay, we'll put this on the warrant. That the committee, which is planning a meeting in two weeks, I think, will then vote they're comfortable with this.
Yeah.
Um, so I think you'll have this support on the floor of town meeting, but I don't want to represent that they've endorsed this.
Yeah, and one important point of clarity there is, we had hoped to have our legal office review it before we punted. Before we started shifted to the twenty-two, three, twenty-three warrant deadline.
Yep.
You know, unfortunately, I, I like, you know, I appreciate your edits, but I, I don't know if we're gonna make that deadline now, because we've run out of time.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, if you.
I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah, I don't wanna rush, I don't wanna be right, I want everyone to be on board.
Yeah, because your council's gonna look at these ads, cause this really makes some fundamental changes.
It does.
But we have two, there's two, this, just so we have some clarity, there's two town council reviews, there is employment law council. Right? And there's also.
General council.
General council that need to go through this.
Sure.
Um, but I, in the interest of fairness, I do appreciate you coming tonight and engaging in this discussion. You do have a couple of my other edits that I, I wanna just.
Yep.
I understand, I understand where you're at, but.
Yep.
You, you know, I think when we got to about our last selectmen's meeting, I went back and pulled all of Myra's emails, particularly Mark Terry. Who was engaged with us on separation that we went through.
Yeah.
And I've got, I've got bells ringing in my ear that there's a conflict between this and that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that, and I think you'll see that it's, it's pretty.
Alright, go ahead.
The next thing, Ron, was remove the work, accept the contracts, have the work, inclusive contract. That actually would be a violation of thirty B. So what you had said here. If I put that in here, was that the town administrator could not award contracts. Because the language you proposed was to take out the TA's authority to award, not a labor contract. Labor contracts are exclusively the purview of the Board of Select under mass law. But all other contracts for goods and services and supplies, without this document, you're already on the chapter thirty B. The pre, mass procurement law.
Okay, but that wasn't what, my, my point with that was that. If the town, there was, there was language in here that said that the town administrator could not approve goods and services clauses. Right? And, and the, and the prior review, I would think the town administrator is the chief procurement officer, and he owns that.
He does.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Well, then, then, but then this, this, the way this is written, it says clearly, the TA awards all contracts for goods and services. But on labor contracts, he comes back to the board.
Yeah, I'm not, I didn't, I don't know how that got translated that.
I didn't change it.
I wanted to be careful that, 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 it, it looked as though that the language said that the TA. Was, was gonna not award contracts for goods and services.
It says, negotiate and present to the select board for their ratification. All contracts and all, involving all subjects within the jurisdiction of the autonomous administrator. Except for contracts for provisions of goods, supplies, and services. So that means accept those contracts, which he awards, but including. All contract of unionized, non-unionized town employees involving wages, hours, and other terms, the conditions of employment. So contracts involving uni contracts, um, your wage and pay plan, if you have one. Uh, that affects employee wages, that all comes back to you for final party. That's what that means.
Okay.
And your lawyer will tell you that.
Okay, but, it, 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 okay, that's why we need him in the league.
Yeah, exactly.
I, 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 I've come, I, I just.
Then he might.
But the CBA, we have one CBA, alright? And typically, huh, yeah, and typically, we sit with them, and we get this thing worked out, and it gets signed. And it gets approved, and we've never had any issues with that. We've not had a labor dispute with them.
Yep.
You know, we had one case where we got taken to court over it, and we got that resolved relatively quickly, but. For the most part, this, the town administrator, which was, I think it was Brian at the time, right? I think he was. You know, he was able to get that resolved and come here and say, this is what it's gonna look like, here it is.
Yep.
And, and that was okay with us. I, I'm not sure that that language.
Well, have your council look at it, and if, I know what it says, cause I've written lots of these, but. If your council says back to you, well, let's just add a little language here so that you'd be more comfortable than.
We're so capable of circling your committee.
Boy, I, I guarantee you, your lawyer is gonna act.
They should.
The lawyer wants to make sure you understand his or her values, so they're gonna make edits. And that's fine, you know. Okay, add the language that the TA will work for the town's emergency management director. Now, this is up to you, but, what most small towns do is they take somebody, um, you know, they'll take, uh. Bob, you know, Bob's retired, and Bob was in the army, and, uh, you know, he's got lots of experience with emergency things, and they'll say. Bob, we're gonna make it the emergency management director. And Bob, those are a couple of classes that, um, um, MEMA, Mass Emergency Management Agency, or maybe FEMA. Maybe gets, um, um, one-on-one certified at lift. And Bob really doesn't do anything other than that. Maybe he's got a closet somewhere with a couple of helmets and some vest and stuff. And, um, then, so Bob has really nothing, no connection to the town government, except that. He's the guy who's been appointed to be the liaison to MEMA and FEMA, because that's what the emergency director does. And then you have a disaster. And guess what happens, guys? The emergency management director owns the town government. His authority exceeds yours. That's the law in Massachusetts.
Right.
It exceeds the fire chief, right? It exceeds the police chief. It exceeds the town administrator. So all of a sudden, you go, old Bob, who's been, you know, um, hanging out fishing most of his days. And now he's running the town government at the worst possible time that you could hand it over to an emergency. Say, hey, Bob, when's the time? An incredibly bad idea. And as towns have realized that this is what the law provides, they've stopped doing it. And they've done one of two things, almost, almost everybody does this. It's either the TA or the fire chief. Less often, it's the police chief, that's fairly rare, but it's almost universally even the, uh, TA or the fire chief. Now, I don't know who it is here. Who is it here?
John Randall.
Okay, so.
An appointed figure, as you're describing.
So, so what this provides is the TA is the ED director. Now, you don't have to do that. If you wanna have the fire chief be the ED director, that's up to you. This, this is what the committee decided. And we went through all this. I talked to them all about this stuff, they wrote a paper form. And they agreed that it should be the TA, cause the TA is the person who runs the day-to-day operation. And why would you have anybody else run the day-to-day operation in a bad emergency, hurricane, a tornado?
The TA also owes its responsibility to select one. So again, it's.
Yeah.
Don't pass the buck, right? It's like, let it start with the person.
And when I was town manager in Foxborough, and believe you me, we had emergencies in that place, cause the power was going down every other week in the winter. Um, and what we did is the board would convene a meeting. And the board would bring all the department heads in, and we would talk to the board and report. And almost every one of those is on, all the TV stations, it was great fun watching yourself in the meeting, even seeing yourself in front of. It was great fun watching yourself in the meeting and seeing yourself in front of the fans. Um, because Foxborough is hyper, you know, community, because of the features. But, you know, the board would make, you know, give some overall policy directions for him, this and that. Say, okay, great. And then the sixteen department heads would go off in a room and we'd make our plan about where we're gonna execute that. And plan worked beautifully. It just worked beautifully. So it's, this provides for the TA to be the ED director. I will tell you that some TAs will say, oh, my goodness, please don't make me do that. You know, let this guy do it, let the fire chief do it, because they're trained more than you. But the question is, whoever you pick is the ED director, just remember, in the time of the worst emergency you can imagine. That's the person that's gonna be running the town's, all the resources are gonna be put under that ED director. The only, I can't see you making a mistake choosing the TA or the fire chief. But boy, oh, boy, I could see you making some real serious mistakes if it's anybody else.
So I have a question about that.
Yeah.
I know currently it says, should the town administrator be unavailable in the last sentence, uh, this is or to section S, as it's saying. Um, should the TA be unavailable, the police chief shall perform such duties as necessary? Should it be the TA shall appoint someone? Whether, depending on the emergency, it might be more appropriate for a fire chief, or it might be more appropriate for a police chief.
You can decide that if you'd like. I like to tie the TA's hands, personally.
Okay.
Um, and I'm speaking from the point of view of a selectman from high school, so you didn't want any ambiguity in this particular section.
Okay.
And I, I mean, as I said, it can be, the person that you're gonna pick is the person who's gonna, is going to have, if they've got this much authority on a normal day-to-day, during an emergency on a Massachusetts law, their authority goes up here. During a declared emergency of the government, okay, their authority goes up here. So you want to think real careful about who you want to possess that level of authority. And the most important thing is to make sure you have somebody with some training, because, you know, you just don't want some, you know, you want somebody who's conversing emergency management system, um, who's at least, I don't know, what, seven hundred rated? One, two, three, eight hundred rated, so that's the whole progression, of course, if you're gonna take.
You know, first of all, let me just interject, this, this guy's done this quite a while, all right? He is all certified through all the ICS standards. He's a former sheriff in the sheriff's department. He gets it. Um, and he lives a couple of streets up from here, not far. And he's, we have had a couple of weather-related emergencies that we have done these, um, tabletop drills. Just to be sure that we were up to, you know, who's gonna run the ship. Um, he has a budget.
Yep.
He is woven into MEMA, right? He gets messages from MEMA on his phone about when it's gonna snow.
Yep.
Um, and so, and he takes pride in his work, and, you know, he's, I, I could understand if it was the, the potential for it to be someone other than him. But he's really a pretty good fit for that job. And, you know, when we did a couple of tabletop drills not long ago, you know, he, he ran the show. And when COVID came along, all right, and we declared a state of emergency in the town, he was active in all that. And it was ultimately the board's health responsibility to manage that crisis, but nonetheless, he had his hands into it. And when we declared a state of emergency in the town, he was at this meeting.
Well, I, I would tell you honestly, Ron, if you struck this whole provision out of here.
Yeah.
Just took the paragraph out, which leaves the authority to appoint the ED director with the board select. And your decision in the short term, while you've got this, I mean, I could say frankly, he sounds like extraordinarily, um, well-qualified person. Um, and your decision is that's, we're comfortable with the fact that he's gonna be running all the town's resources during emergencies. Then fine, just take it out of here.
If we leave this in, though, we're gonna kick this guy to the curb.
Well, yes. So if, so you wanna have a conversation, and you want, and you want to decide if that's something you want to do, you want to change this or not. Now, the other thing you've got to keep in mind is, you're not gonna have a guy like that all the time. I can tell you.
Absolutely, you're right.
As an extraordinary find, and that's not something you get very often in a, in a small town. You don't get that very often in a big town.
Yeah, age is on the rise, right?
So, right, so there's nothing wrong necessarily with taking back that authority, taking this whole clause out of the chart of the bylaw. And having a selectman retain the authority, and then you can decide when he moves. Who do you want to have be, uh, the emergency management director? I'm just telling you, when you lose that talent, go to the talent, you've got your TA and your, and your fire chief, because they're trained, they're already trained. Can you imagine in this day and age, if you lose this gentleman, and now you're gonna appoint an ED director and he's saying, okay, we need somebody to step up? It's gonna take them three years before they know what the heck they're doing. The ICS classes, to get up to eight hundred level, you're looking at three years minimum to get to there. I'm, I'm eight hundred level. I know the chief is probably higher than that. But finding people that are certified at that level off the shelf, you get an extraordinary guy, you're lucky, but that doesn't happen. So you could take, I mean, you're not gonna do anything to weaken this TA bylaw if you take that whole paragraph out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, that's, you know, you guys think what you want to do with that. Next one was, uh, section four-four A, a meant to improve language, the TA with the approval of the board of selection designated temporary town administrator. I think I put in the language for you on that.
I think so too, yeah.
Yeah, so what I did is, um, I took that out altogether. So that the TA is not named his or her own replacement. And I substituted vacancy, I substituted back to board makes the appointment of the other. But vacancy, which enables you to make the appointment, for purposes of this paragraph, shall not include the town administrator's absence for vacation, sick leave, bereavement, or other absences of less than twenty days. There's a reason for this. The reason is because boards are selected, and scrupulous boards are selected, I'm sure they'll never recruit you. But remember, we build systems in order not to tempt people. Scrupulous boards, absent a clause like this, have taken the opportunity to appoint the TA while their TA is on vacation. And they've used this clause as a way to get, to do it legally and get around the termination provisions. Now, that's not gonna hold up in court, but I can tell you, the town of Weston fired their TA while he was on vacation. He had, there's no bylaw, he had a weak contract, and they, he came back from vacation, they said, you have a job. What? And they, we, we appointed him interim, we were starting the hiring process, and he had no recall, no respite, because there was no provision. And so he sued, and he won. They gave him a bazillion dollars each way. But he was not the TA, they did replace him, but they had a bylaw. Now, if they'd just not been silly to start with, and they just said, we want you to go, let's, let's talk and let's get a settlement put together, then all would have been fine. But it disturbed the town, there were recalls and all sorts of awful things. So this clause basically says, if you're gonna appoint an interim, just let the TA's leave, not when the guys aren't on vacations. That's all this means. It's, it's pretty benign, and your council's gonna, I guarantee your council's gonna say, yeah, this, this is something you need. So I, but I took away the whole clause that the TA names his own interim, um, and left that to the board's authority.
Is there a difference in the word intern? It says like, to perform the duties of the office on an acting basis? To me, that should be the word intern. Is there any, I got, just trying to think.
Interchangeable change.
Interchangeable, okay. Something new adds to that.
Yeah, your lawyer might want a different word, but, but what you're trying to get at here, I mean, let's say the TA is gonna, gets really sick. Um, attracts cancer.
Sure.
And says to you, look, I, I need to leave with absence for six months to fight cancer. The prognosis says I'll be back, but I'm not gonna be able to.
Yeah, be my six months.
You're gonna name, that's over twenty-one days, you're gonna name the minimum.
Yeah. And this doesn't talk anything about the job security upon return, correct? So I think of like someone who's.
Typically are power returning.
So. Yes, so say you, you're in the National Guard and you get sent away for a year, like, there's no clause in here to say that you have your job being held upon returning, right? Or, I think we should be aware in that sense.
No, you, I've never seen.
Okay.
You can ask your, you can ask your lawyer, I've never seen.
Just trying to think.
Gives them the duty, so as soon as you become the interim, this is the job.
Okay.
The minute you take the oath of office, I should say, and sign the town clerk's book. The minute after you take the oath of office, that's your job.
Okay.
So there's nothing to give, or the job is.
All right.
Okay. TA will conduct annual performance evaluations on staff, that's already in here, and it might not have been clear where in the heck it is, and I actually have a look for it. It's in clause four-four C. And it says, to develop the district town personnel system, including unlimited personal policies, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, just like this.
Including provisions for an annual employee performance review, section four dash two.
Four dash two, okay, sorry.
Paragraph C, and it says right in, including provisions for an annual employee performance review. The TA has to come up with a personnel system, um, which includes all those components. That's a written system, so, and, you know, once he or she creates that, it's, you know, it's created, it's the law, yes, that too. Review should be, TA required to participate in an annual performance review. So this is the TA's performance review, which will consist of a three hundred sixty-degree review process. Yeah, that's pretty, you know, you see that a lot. This review, review will be reviewed and discussed by the board of select within thirty days after completion, I'll feedback, send that out to people for completion. Now, what I suggest is that you should don't put this in your bylaw, because that's gonna tie your hands. Whatever you write in here is what you're gonna do. You're much better off to put that in the TA's contract. Now, you're gonna have a much more complex document as a permanent TA's contract than you want you, than the one you have with Dave as an interim. Because your lawyer is going to, uh, let me tell you what's gonna happen. Your TA appointee, the firm, is gonna come in here with the town administrator's model contract, which has been prepared by an eternity, ironically, at Miracle Hall. It's just coincidental, but that's who prepared it.
Right.
He's just gonna fill in the blanks. That model contract has extensive provisions in here for annual review. You and your TA are going to discuss that, and you're gonna modify that section from the model to whatever it is you want. If you put that in the bylaw, the two of you can't do any modeling, because you will be stuck with one's in the bylaw.
That supersedes the contract.
Strongly admonish you, don't tie your hands. Whatever you want to have for annual review, put it in the contract. That's the safest way to do it, and it gives you complete flexibility to do what you want in conversation with your TA. And by law, your TA is gonna be all over wanting to have an annual review. Guaranteed. You know, what we've all learned through bitter experience is, you know, your best protection, if somebody gets, doesn't like you and wants to fire you for the, you know, uh, if you're a hair cutter or you're a neck tie, whatever, the best protection is the review, which the board did. And it was good, and then all of a sudden, three months later, somebody wants to fire you. You tell me I'm still in a good job, I won't fire you. So TAs want a review, but you do that in the contract. That's, it's almost never in the law. I've never seen it in the bylaw or charter, but it's universal in contracts.
I have a question from an audience member.
Now, what's the difference between that, uh, that, um, section in, uh, that information in paragraph C? And up on twelve point one, we're getting, uh, third, uh, paragraph down. Says the select board shall provide for an annual review of the job performance of the town administrator. The importance of this is your.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm suggesting you have, that clause. So that means that the selectman and the TA negotiate a contract and the annual review provisions in that contract.
Okay, so that, that's not, that doesn't interfere with what you.
It would interfere, if I put in the language that Ron was asking about, then it would be a direct contradiction. And then you'd have to take out, you'd have to take out the third bag, that's the removal. So what I'm saying is.
Yeah, no, you want to insert that in their, in their individual agreement rather than the bylaw. As long as there's an understanding here that that particular person needs to have a score.
Yeah, well, you've got, you've got, you've got a provision that says you have to do it.
That's, that's fine.
So it doesn't give you the, the right to then say, oh, we're not gonna do a review. You, you're bound by these, this is the law of the town.
Could you give some compensation off of it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you were concerned about the bylaw being, you know, for small towns. I, I would tell you honestly, small towns are the ones that I use to model this, the charter and the bylaw. Specifically, Hubbardston, because Ryan McClain, you should know, was on that, and Ryan's the TA in Hubbardston, and they have a charter. So that was one of the ones I looked at. I looked at Salisbury, because they're a little bit of a new, but not much bigger. I looked at Ashburnham, with Chief Liz, because they're just, just about identically the same size as you, think about five thousand populations. So they're about the same size. Um, and a couple others that were very similar, so I don't want you to think that small towns don't have bylaws or charters about here. They do, it's very common. Now, when you go out, even when you go out west now, into the Berkshires, they're getting, they're very common, because even the starters, you know, tends to be the wave professionally, if you go out in a very small town, and you take a bigger town, you go to a bigger town, and you kind of move east. But even in the small towns out there, bylaws are fairly common, not universal. You know, I'm not gonna tell you that the town of Washington, Massachusetts, population three hundred and twenty-six, has a bylaw. About a TA, they probably have a TA. Um, the towns that have TAs tend to have bylaws, it's pretty common, or charges. Uh, the termination clause, okay, so let's talk about that. So in this, because that's the last thing that Ron asked about, and I think it's pretty strong landing in here for the so-called mistaken fails. All right. The one that draws our section four-five, removal and suspension. And what I'm giving you here are very powerful rights to dismiss a town administrator. There's a process, because your own lawyer, your own labor lawyer will tell you, you have to have a structured process. And that's that. The absolute best way to get sued and lose big time is to fire somebody without going through due process, because that's wrong. The number one, the number one rule today is due process, you know? This is America, you can't take away people's employment rights, their right to make a living, unless you follow due process. So this lays out a due process, process. Is this the only one? No. This is a very simplified one, I will tell you that. Lots of termination clauses for town administrators are much more complex than this. This is pretty basic. So what this provides first is that two of you have to fire. It says two-thirds. Now, right now, you're a three-member board, if you ever go to five, that would require four to fire. Two-thirds of five doesn't exist, so it would be four. The three-member board is two, well, that's a majority as well as two-thirds, so same thing. First thing you do, if you adopt a preliminary, preliminary resolution of removal by vote of a majority, two or three, same wire. So we're gonna remove the town administrator, this is the reason why. At that point, you could put the town administrator under suspension for forty-five days. Now, that's with pay, okay, because if you do it without pay, you're gonna be giving the TA that money back. So you just put him on for forty-five days. During the forty-five days is when you invoke clause B, which is to conduct a preliminary resolution of termination, have the hearing, go through the whole process, you call your labor lawyer in, because you don't do this without your labor lawyer on your elbow, and you have the whole process. Once you're done with that, and somewhere, hopefully, inside the forty-five days. And you could take longer if you want to, but hopefully inside. Then you adopt the final resolution of removal again by two-thirds vote, et cetera, et cetera. So, this lays out the process that you follow, but this is very flawed. This really is not terribly specific.
Should it be?
And, and that's intention.
Okay.
Because this clause is intended to give you some limitations. But not box you in too much.
Broad strokes.
So it lays out a process, but it's a very broad process. And it's got lots of room for filling in details. That's intentional, I'll tell you why. So at the end of the process, and this is where that clause comes in, one that I told you about. The action of the select board in suspending or removing the town administrator shall be final. It being the intent of this provision to vest all authority and fix all responsibility. For such suspension or removal slowly, solely in the select board. So what this is saying is, if you fire your town administrator. And it was a really dumb decision, because everybody in town thought he or she was doing a great job, you all did. On the other hand, if you're getting complaints from all your employees and citizens saying, oh my goodness, what did you do? Then you fire them and everybody in the community says, nice job. By the way, you screwed up hiring a person, but at least you saw that you did it and you got rid of them, so, good job. This is intended to fix responsibility on somebody. Because the worst thing you can have is you hire a TA, they're a total failure and everybody's going, well, whose fault is it? So this is intent, this is very intentional, to put the heat on you. And when I was a selectman, I went through a firing of a town administrator, it was a very unhappy process. And I went through two hirings of town administrators in my nineties. And I can tell you that when they fired the town administrator, they mangled him. They refused, the majority of the board. We knew the gentleman had to go. But he was one year shy of his retirement. And they were gonna fire him one year short, and we would have got so sued, it would have been astronomical. Thirty-five, thirty-six year career. And they were gonna fire him one year short of his pension. It just would have, we would have gotten so sued. They had no reasons other than they just, you know, I need to go, me and you. And so I made an arrangement, brokered an arrangement with two of my colleagues on the board, that we were gonna just put him into a, uh, chief financial officer job that we created, because he was really good with budgets. He'd been the assessor for many years and got elevated to TA job. And we put that in effect, he was gonna sit in that job for one year and the time. Great, great. And the night he came to do it, um, one of the three board members said, yeah, I can't do that anymore, I just wanna fire. And I said, look. You haven't stated any reasons, you have no process, you've refused to involve labor council. This is headed for such a train wreck, it is beyond comprehension. And they said, well, that's what we're gonna do, and I said, great, here's my resignation. And I resigned. I left the board above the full Lawrenceville Tribune headline. I just wasn't gonna participate in that debacle. So you can probably guess what happened. There were two selectmen on the ballot later that year, I was one of them. Well, I'd resigned three months, six months early, so I wouldn't. The other guy got recalled and he got thrown off the board. And a guy got put in. In meantime, they didn't fire the guy. They put the new selectman on and the TA stayed for another three years. And they ended up paying him all kinds of money, because they suspended him for six months, they paid him for the six months. He sat home, he didn't do any work, the town had to hire another guy.
Efficient.
So they paid two salaries, the guy get, the selectman that engineered it all got thrown off the board, another guy came in. And then, um, Chad did it for a couple more years and then lo and behold, he said, I've had enough of this slowness. And he went up, he became the town manager of Wolfboro, which is like one of the primo jobs in the entire country. And he became the town manager of Wolfboro in Hampshire, where he stayed for, oh, ten, fifteen years. Collecting his wonderful Massachusetts, hundred percent of his Massachusetts. So. When I tell you, these things can be at the bottom, they can be at the bottom. So you've got some structure here. That would, and I'm not saying that board can't mangle no matter what process you put in place, because they're not threading, but that happened, had a process. And they just didn't do it. But at least if you got a process and you get reasonably intelligent people on the board, and you guys are more than reasonably intelligent people. Then you get a process to follow. Now, there's a lot of details that need to be fleshed out, but I don't recommend you put in the bylaw. Because the bylaw binds you. Remember, the only way you can change this is go back to town meeting. In the contract, town administrator, when you appoint him over. In that standard contract, there's a whole section on termination. And it is not inconsistent with one I've written for you. But it's a lot more detailed. So it'll have things in there like. If you fire the TA, there's the reasons you can do it. And if you do it for all of those reasons, you don't owe him or her any money. If you do it for some other reason, and you can, it'll say right in that contract. If the board just wants to fire the TA and doesn't wanna go through and explain why, then you're gonna pay him severance pay. Six months, nine months, whatever you negotiate. So it'll have two different clauses in there, one would be termination for cost, one would be termination without cost. And that's a good, that's a well-structured contract, I'll be in a contract. Because it, this, it doesn't contradict any of this, but it gives you complete flexibility. And usually what happens is. If you've got good, very good labor council, I know Miracle Hall very well, I've been working with it for a long, long time. You've got very good labor council, they'll come in, you're smart guys, you'll call them, run them, and he'll say to them, it burns. And he'll say to you, great, bring me a TA, explain the situation, work out a deal, work out a package and get him on his way. He wants his professional reputation protected, so they can make their livelihood, get a new job. You don't wanna have turmoil and disorder or a nice clean departure. And that's what your labor lawyer is gonna recommend you do nicely. So this facilitates that and the contract will take care of the rest. So those are the comments that I offer for you, Ron, for the things that you had brought up and hopefully in the spirit of creating something you gentlemen can work with. And.
So there's a couple things I wanna add first, I.
Sure.
You know, this is our first discussion, I know I jumped in in a couple of those governance committee meetings and. I admire your patience.
I've been married forty-six years.
I get it.
Jimmy, Mike and I were talking on the way in, um, about how long we've all been married, all along for a marriage. And we decided, um, swear to your damn, we did decide this, that it's only because our wife is always right. We actually just, and we're always wrong, it doesn't dispute. Right? My wife sees this, my wife sees this on YouTube. I'm sorry, apologies.
No, I'm just, I appreciate everything you did, this, you know. And let me just give you a little bit of my thoughts about this, because I, I wasn't born and brought up here, but I've been here a long time. Right? And I got involved in, in town government, probably eighteen, nineteen years ago, when we first moved in here. And in all of that time, from then until now, I can tell you without a doubt. There are none of the boards that are finger pointing or backbiting each other. I just don't see it in the town. I don't, I don't see it. Do they all disagree? Do they all agree most of the time? No. Do they have emotional conversations? You bet. But at the end of the day, have we made some mistakes in this town? Oh, you bet we have. And what we've worked together to solve those mistakes and get those resolved the right way. And that has happened in all the years I've sat here. And, 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 and the cohesiveness of how all these boards work together is just, it, it's a model. It's a model. And so, in, in, in some way, as I read this. My concern, as I said in my comment to Leah, is that this may be an overreach in some ways for the town. I'm not sure, but I know the examples that you brought up tonight about Foxborough and North Reading and some of the, I, I went to a selectman's, I own a home in another town, not in the state. And I decided to pop in a selectman's meeting one night when I was there. And I, it was a five-member board, it's a lot bigger town. And they spent half of their meeting, an hour and a half, talking about all the litigation the town was in. We have, uh, in all this many years I've been on this board, we have one lawsuit against us. We just don't have it. We, we just don't. And, and why? I don't know. Um, I, I, I don't know. Maybe it's just good fortune, good luck, good management, I don't know, but we're not spending our time.
We had a tradition of putting good people on boards that are smart and the way they deal with it. And that's, that's the good thing, you know, when we started the project two years ago. After you appointed your governance committee and I started meeting them very shortly. One of the observations I made was, why are you doing this?
Yeah.
Why you want a charter?
Absolutely.
You don't always need each other. I mean, you know, but we ended up writing, it's interesting. To note that what we ended up writing was nothing but formal description of what you probably did. All the elected boards were retained, all except for the tree warden and town clerk, but that had already been changed at town meeting. So that charter was basically a reiteration of what the town currently looks structured as. Didn't change anything. Except the town administrator. That was the one thing that changed. And when I asked them. What is it you're trying to accomplish? They said, we're trying to provide some structure, because we didn't have that for Brian. And most people liked Brian, thought he was doing a good job. And a big part of the reason he decided to leave was, he doesn't have any structure. There's nothing to describe what the job was, and he just felt somewhat frustrating. Now, in fairness to the town. Brian was a manager who was very seasoned, very well experienced. Mid, beginning to late career, from mid to late career, kind of in that niche. And you've got a, you've got an experienced manager, which is not typical for what you're gonna get for a town assigned to Dunce. So you shouldn't have the expectation that your new TA is gonna be a duplicate of Brian, because that's not realistic. Um, you've got Brian in certain circumstances that allow him to do it, you're fortunate. And he was, got along pretty easy. He described another one that you had who was a train wreck and that happens too, but. When they told me, what we're really trying to do is create a friend with for town administrators, so. We can attract somebody who's got reasonable experience. And enough authority in here to know what it is they're supposed to do. And be able to affect, helping you have good government, continuing what you have and making it even better. I said to them, okay, and they wanna be very careful. How much authority we give that TA and how much we change, because the best thing, the worst thing you can do with TA. And I've been the first time town manager, two times. After they passed the charter. And it's tough, because all of a sudden you come in from the outside, nobody knows you, except the board that appointed you, and I don't really know you. And now you're exercising all this authority. And, you know, it's like a radical change from what used to be the case. And immediately there's tension, because it's an outsider telling everybody what to do. Everybody's lost their authority and it's just a train wreck. And about the third administrator in, maybe seven, eight years in, you probably fired a couple in that time. It starts to get normalized finally and everybody figures out who's gonna do what. So I said to the committee, let's craft a document. Whether it's in the charter, it's in the bylaw, the section. That gives the TA enough authority to be able to get the job done and do the good things that an administrator can do for you. But without creating, without setting him up for failure or her. Or giving him too much. And then, because then, because then what happens is the TA is saying, well, geez, the thing says I'm supposed to do this. And you're saying, yeah, but we don't want you to do that. Yeah, but it says I'm supposed to, and I took the oath to do it. And then you just set up for failure. Because if you do it, your legal responsibility is, you get the board being angry with you. How's that gonna work out? So we worked very hard, and I, again, I give the committee a lot of credit. They worked hard to create a document that tried to strike a compromise. Between giving the TA enough authority to do the things that will let him or her give the advantage of a professionally trained person. And let's face it, two thousand twenty-two, you need that. But not so much authority that it would create a lot of controversy. So I, you know, I make the joke with Mike all the time, but. Mike was very, very instrumental on the committee in continually being the voice for pulling back on not granting so much authority. John gave us some great ideas as well, looking at it, about retracting some of that stuff. Leah in the committee was very receptive to that, um, about retracting in, in places. Brian sent us a, an email from whoever he is right now, someplace on the planet. And he even had more retractions of authority that he suggested be considered. And the committee at their last meeting went through them one by one and looked in and said, um, we're gonna take some things out. So if you actually compare this bylaw to the charter, say, back revision seven rate. This is now a much weaker town administrator position than what it started out as, and that wasn't particularly strong. So what we tried to do for you, Ron, is to give you a good compromise that we think works. But I think the committee would tell you, just like I would, that's our best effort, it doesn't mean it's a hundred percent right. And at the end of the day, you're the guys that have the responsibility to make the decision what, what does and what doesn't, if not the win. One last thought I'll give you. It's real easy to. Talk about this thing forever. We've been doing it for two years. And we've taken stuff out, put it back in, taken it out, put it back in, and it didn't happen for a long time. It's very easy to just continue to, to talk about this thing ad nauseam, and you never get it done. At some point. You gotta put this thing in front of the voters, in front of the people.
Yeah.
And the committee thinks this is ready to go in front of the people, subject to legal review.
Yeah.
Because we had a spirited debate about that at the last meeting. And I think the consensus was, it's time. Now, when this document gets in front of the people, and I think that the feeling was, as much authority as the selectmen have and should have. Three people shouldn't shortstop the ability of the entire town to see this and to tell you if it's right or wrong. You should put this on the warrant, you should let your people have a shot at it. Now, it's a good thing, because there's only two possibilities. They pass it, in which case your people are saying, we're satisfied with this. It's not perfect, but it's enough of it that we're gonna pass. Or they're gonna amend it right on the floor of the town meeting, which they can do. All I guess is a third possibility, which is you're gonna talk about some things and say they don't like and they're gonna reject. And then you get a chance to come back with it, to try to fix it and come back and fall.
Yeah.
But if you delay. And, and not do anything, then you're just prolonging the day when you've got to go to the people no matter what. And you've gotta give them the last shot at this. So.
And in that lens, I'm gonna be the one that delays it, because in trying to be aware of time, I know we don't have much time till March twenty-third.
Yeah.
Basically, we're actually out of time.
When you actually go print, if you want, actually.
It gets sent on March twenty-third, right out for.
It's closed, there's no more.
It's closed. So, so we are out of time, so that's why your, your council has been fantastic. I think it's appropriate that it goes to.
Well, I would tell you honestly, if the twenty-third is a, is a hard stop. Because I was kinda led to believe the twenty-third was when the warrant closes and you put the articles out, but it's still another week or two before the language is final. If you've got another week or two to finalize language, then you probably get enough time for your council to do whatever editing he wants in front of you. But if that's not the case.
Yeah.
Getting this new draft, if you like this, in front of a lawyer and getting it edited by twenty-third, that's a pretty tall.
Yeah, I don't think we have enough.
I don't, um. Him and I are in lockstep, I mean, we haven't, I'm in lockstep with him, I'm not. Uh, uh, this is, in my opinion, here's where I see this, okay?
Yeah.
And, and maybe I'm coming from corporate culture too much, right? If I'm gonna walk into a board meeting, right, with a presentation. I'm going to anticipate the questions and develop the answers before I walk into that meeting. Okay, because it's just the way it is in my world, alright? We're gonna put this before the town. This board, us together, need to understand that this is the final product and it represents all of the work that's gone into it. And that it's been well thought out, reviewed by legal counsel, both on the labor side and on town council side. And now this thing is ready for prime time, ladies and gentlemen, this thing is ready for prime time, we can't make that statement here.
Yeah, and you know what, Ron, if you can't, if you three, um, two gentlemen and a lady, if, if, if you can't say that. Then you probably ought not to put it up there. Because in order to have something of this importance with this much material, substance.
Yeah.
Pass. You're gonna have a unanimous committee, and you do have that. And as I say, I don't think they'll be adverse to, you know, some modest changing of this, this is definitely fine. Especially if that modest change in results in your unanimous call.
Right.
Because if you've got your board unanimous and you've got the governance committee unanimous, and they've already planned, you know, to do outreach with others. Then your, your likelihood of getting it passed in the fall is like, pretty much a hundred percent.
More, more likely than. It's more, more likely than kind of squeeze it into a bottleneck right now, which.
If you jam the thing on that hour, you don't even have the confidence yet, then how are you gonna represent to the people you think this is the right thing?
And that's exactly my point. That, that is exactly my point.
They turn to you for guidance.
They absolutely do. That's what we could vote it in for. We're the CEOs of the municipal corporation of Town Dustville.
Yeah.
Every risk appears part of it, don't jam it down.
Yeah, I go to my town meeting now. I'm a civilian, you know, I'm not a selectman. I'm not a town manager.
Yeah.
And I sit up there and most of the time they say, "Good job, yeah, good job." The other ones, I say, "What are you doing? This is so not should be here in front of us." And I make the motion table. So you're quite right. If you don't have that confidence yet, and it's a lot to try to get down to the twenty-third, I mean, it's really practical. And take the time you need over the summer. But I would strongly urge you, have a special in the fall. Get this thing ready over the summer. Get the consensus behind it. I'm, I'm available to do anything you need.
Yeah.
And I know your lawyer is working on this. We already exchanged hello. Hey, nice to be working with you again. And I'm happy to help him. And then call the special, get it passed, and then by the time you, I mean, by that point, you'll have advertised. You'll have probably started interviews. You'll probably be close to appointing. You'll be able to give the TA, at the very least, a warrant and say, "This is what's on. It's probably gonna pass. We get everybody supporting it." And you're gonna get good candidates. But I would strongly urge, don't finalize the hiring process until you got this piece of paper to give you candidates.
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna know.
Yeah, thank you.
Jake, wasn't the hiring stop more for the departments to make sure they had everything done, and then it was a couple of weeks after that for the twenty-third?
I think it was mostly for the town clerk's concerns regarding whether they could have any special questions for the power, things like that, exclusions.
What'd you town meeting?
May fourteenth. Saturday.
May fourteenth, yes.
Yeah.
So you're probably, you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna.
Couple of weeks, couple of weeks.
Fourteen days prior to meeting in different places in town.
Yeah.
Which means practically you're gonna have your final wording fourteen days before that, which puts you into about the first to second week of April, so.
Two, two.
You're close. I mean, you're very close.
It's, we're not, I'm not, we're not comfortable.
Yeah.
We wanna be unanimous, and I know Ron has some apprehensions. I think it's probably politically and collectively best to take good feedback.
If it's any comfort to you, you guys have seen this basically in the last, what, three weeks roughly for the first time?
Yeah, about two weeks now.
Committee worked on it for two weeks.
I get all that. I get all that. And you know what? I've, I've done all I can to look at this in an expedited fashion. And I've read it and reread it and read it again. And, you know, I've come up with different understandings as I read through it.
Sure.
And, you know.
I think the committee hoped, and, and frankly, I did too, that it would pass muster largely as written, and you guys would say, "Yep, okay, we're gonna put it on the warrant." But I think the committee would absolutely respect the fact that we want some more time to work on this. I don't think.
Really, it's just making sure counsel, to me, that's like, we talked earlier on, is.
And I don't mean to speak for the committee, but I would be this bold. I think the committee would say, "Yes, if we need the time, let's work on it. But please, put it on the warrant for the fall."
Yeah, no, that's the goal of.
We just need to get this in front of the people finally.
Yeah, goal of a new interim town.
I think, I think we'll have a fall this year. There's gonna be.
Couple topics.
There's gonna be a few things put in the file here.
Joan, your question, and then we'll shift to other things on the agenda.
I have a couple of questions, but if we're gonna continue to talk about this next time, yes, we may.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Well, because you're meeting you gentlemen in person, and I already told Peter that you said hello.
All right, good.
So I gotta ask you though, how, how do you know? Is your patient his or?
No, he has an associate, Dr. Legana.
Yeah.
And we know very well.
Oh, okay. Because Pete said, I don't know.
Yeah, stone him.
Okay.
They weren't stoning. I don't know where he is today, but she's in Worcester.
Livery, in one of the little sections. I forget the name of it.
Yeah.
But he's on all kinds, I think he's on three different boards sometimes.
A lot.
Yeah, so be very involved. Anyways, good luck.
Thanks so much.
Ryan will be home soon.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Couple of days, I think. On the agenda, we also have, so we approved the town administrator's contract, right? Did I sign it? Okay.
You, you did, you signed that as you, right?
Yeah.
Scratched over the ampersands.
I just signed it where my name was.
Just took your name, your signature.
I'll get it from Jake to make it clear. We have some old business, right, maybe, within approved minutes? Make a motion to approve the February sixteenth and twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two minutes from the select board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I know we have some other folks here. Are we, are we having an unexpected business?
No, no public phone.
No public phone.
Well said.
Yeah, I think you need to go into the executive session. That was just in case we needed to negotiate a better with interim.
So the only thing I would ask Jake is in Leah's absence, right? If there's some possibility that David is gonna have an issue with that agreement, would you panel another selectman's meeting so we can address that?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Just put, talk to him, because my counsel's more flexible in this. But talk to him and let's get that worked out, because she doesn't come back till the twenty-third.
Third, yeah.
Yes, we can always call a meeting on Friday there. So that is not counted against, of course, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just wanna not have an issue with David getting it, because essentially, when we appoint him tonight, Brian is officially dismissed from his duties.
Yeah, I'll begin working with her for the onboarding process, because I got to stuff this email and everything.
Yeah, and then, you know, he'll, he'll come to our next, he should, our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, I believe he's supposed to be here by the twenty-ninth. This is gonna start on the twenty-eighth.
And then you're gonna set him up with his email account?
Yes.
You, you have the rights to that, right? Not, not the copy machine passwords and all that kind of stuff. You have that, right?
We can easily have the tech company change everything.
Okay, that's fine.
I just didn't wanna, and Brian just.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying, I just wanna be sure that he doesn't leave and we don't have those passwords like we had once before.
I have the fire chief here. I'm just gonna make sure I'm not missing something from the department head. Are you here for any reason or?
I was on vacation, and when I was on vacation, I got a message from Ronnie that said that there was a meeting on the fifteenth, and I was requested to be there.
Today's the sixteenth.
And then it made a good change from the fifteenth to the sixteenth, so I'm talking around yesterday.
Yeah.
And three-thirty yesterday, I got the message that the meeting got moved to tonight, so.
I don't have any update for you, so I'm not sure.
Do you get these? Don't you get the, you don't get these?
No, I'm not special enough.
They're distributed.
Guess he has since resigned since that.
See what happens when you go on vacation. One vacation I had to.
Sometimes I don't wanna come back from vacation.
I come back, I've been back in two weeks.
Yeah.
But when I was on vacation, it took every year.
No, you know, you know.
I don't.
You know, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's a canvas then.
We're just phone calling. You got your questions.
Okay.
Cool.
Stop by some.
Thank you.
Oh, we'll do watch. Anyway.
All right.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Julie. Mike, you're good?
I'm good, yeah. I'll be talking to Jake tomorrow.
Okay.
Jake, you were two warrants, because I'm, I'm not around tomorrow morning, right? Are those, this is it, right?
Yep.
I sign them, he sign them. Bonnie's not gonna, Bonnie's gonna be okay with this, right?
Until next week, she's good.
And then we gotta do this again next week?
The warrant's gonna be signed next week, but Leah may be back. I think she's supposed to be back by Thursday. So if you can't make it in that Wednesday to sign it, no, it's not that long.
I'm probably around once, like, we tell them to sign, but naturally, me.
We both gotta sign, right? So she comes back. She comes back on Wednesday, the twenty-third. When does the warrant need to be signed?
The warrant is usually done on Wednesdays, but it can wait a day for signature if need be. So either if you wanna both try to come in that Wednesday to sign it, or if that's not possible.
If you're gonna come in, I'll, I'll come in with you, right?
I'd rather come in than need, because I just.
Yeah, no, that's, we just need to sign that so they can pay the bills.
Yeah.
Is that what you want us to do?
That's completely up to you, like I said.
Yeah, let's do that.
So we'll come by on the twenty-third, just, all right? And you'll have the warrant signed, I hope.
Yeah, I'll, I'll text you and let you know when it's ready.
Yeah.
Because it can vary depending on how fast the response.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Do you guys have any questions? I'm making sure. Just, you can hang out. Any other motions you want to make?
The jury.
Second.
All right.